This is... So excited to be in council chambers and... But before we go any further, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Usually I start councils by saying, "This evening, we're blessed to have a pastor here to pray with us." And I get to say that right now. It is an honor to have Pastor April Casperson with us to open us up in prayer. Pastor, welcome.
This afternoon, we gather as citizens who are thankful for all of the gifts that we have. We are thankful for those who have paved the way to this moment in our community's work, and we are thankful for our current leadership and their commitment to the community. We know that with each successive election, the work may not be finished, but each cycle moves us closer to creating the community that we desire. We gather today as individual citizens, bringing our whole selves, diverse backgrounds, races, commitments, and experiences. And we have arrived here today by many paths. And yet, we are citizens who are united in our vision. We have a vision to uphold our communal responsibilities for the common good and to commit to the well-being of all those who call this community home. We are citizens who are united in the belief that healthy, equitable, accountable government must allow all of us to rise up and must prevent all of us from falling behind. As our newly-elected leaders assume their responsibilities and leadership, may they come to recognize the responsibility of their service. May they lead with wisdom and courage, compassion and humility, discernment and curiosity. May they be empowered to bear the responsibility of leadership with integrity. And may we always see them in a commitment to service. May they always see us a willingness to support. May our newly-elected leaders be inspired with courage and wisdom and compassion that they may stand in solidarity with those on the margins. May they be guided to know and to do what is right. May they recognize compromise as a sign of strength and not weakness. May they see that no one person has a greater claim to truth or commitment, empathy, or justice. And may we all listen and learn from one another and honor and respect the sacredness of everyone that we serve. May we all resist evil, injustice, and oppression in whatever forms they present themselves today and always. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And now, please join me in welcoming Columbus City Council President Shannon Hardin to deliver opening remarks.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend, for opening us up and reminding us of why we're here. Not just why we gather to celebrate today, but as elected officials, why we serve and who we serve, and those values that hopefully will guide this council in this next session. It is really an honor to welcome everyone to this really exciting day. It is a day that has been in the making for many, many years to get us here as council continues to grow, to serve a growing and more diverse and changing community. On behalf of my colleagues, and would you help me? I'm going to ask them to stand as I say their name. Would you help me celebrate them as we welcome you into the People's House? Councilmember Nick Bankston. Councilmember Lourdes Rosa de Badia. Press pro tem, Rob Dorrance. Councilmember Emmanuel Reamy. In her absence today, Councilmember Shayla Favor. As we join, as we come together, as we welcome you to celebrate our newest council members, let's celebrate our newest council members. Councilmember De Alcar. Councilmember Melissa Green. And the birthday boy himself, Councilmember Chris White. So I often talk about this room, this space, this physical space. And I would be remiss, actually. She's going to speak in a second. But our former colleague, former president pro tem Elizabeth Brown, would you stand and be recognized as well? So I often talk about this space, this room. This building as being the People's House. And if that be true, then this physical space, this room that we gather in today is the People's Living Room. It's where we come together to have the most difficult conversations, but the biggest celebrations, too. It's where we come together, bring the diversity of our great city together to move our community forward. We break fast. We celebrate Passover. We celebrate our different faiths and our different religions, our different holidays in this room to make sure that everybody feels welcome in this space. And so today, we get together to celebrate three incredible dedicated public servants as they enter into office. And just like we want to bring the community into council chambers, we're trying to bring council out into the community as well. This election was historic. It was the first time we used our new hybrid district system. This system makes sure that every corner of our city is represented in council. This acknowledges the district character of our neighborhoods and empowers our members to be true advocates for the people that they serve. Today, we acknowledge three new members of council: Chris White, Melissa Green, and Nancy De Alcar, who have been entrusted by the people of Columbus to represent them. They all bring their unique backgrounds and perspectives to the job. They have led companies and organizations. They have advocated for vulnerable residents. They've inspired our communities and established themselves through their dedication to this city and to its people. Although they took different paths, they are now united by a common cause. They have all answered the call to serve, to dedicate themselves to those around them. So thank you for answering that call, council members. Thank you for standing up. I will add that it is harder to be an elected official today than ever before. There is so much cynicism out there. There is so much mistrust, maybe rightfully so, of institutions. And so I get inspired, I get excited when folks raise their hand and say, "Well, I'll jump in." "I will put my name on the line." "I will open myself up to all that comes with this huge, huge responsibility." So on behalf of a grateful resident of this city, but certainly as a new member or a new colleague of yours, I'm so grateful that you answered the call to serve. In the People's Living Room, we celebrate not just the individuals on the dais, but the collective spirit of our city, the mosaic of backgrounds, experiences, and aspirations that define Columbus. I'm proud that the diversity is reflected in the composition of our city council. It's a testament to the inclusivity and vibrancy that define our community. As you formally take your oath of office today, remember that this space is defined more than just by legislation. This is a space for dialogue. It's a space for understanding. This is a place where hopes and dreams and aspirations of the people who love this city become action. As representatives of the people, you have the power to shape our city's future. Your decisions will impact the lives of those you serve, and the ripple effect of your actions will extend far beyond these chambers. Embrace the challenges with courage. Approach each decision with empathy. And let the spirit of collaboration guide you. I know that you will go above and beyond in answering that call. I am proud to serve as council president on the most pro-people council Columbus has ever seen. I think that's right, yeah. Chris, Melissa, and Nancy, I am eager to welcome you to city council and work alongside you to forge a more inclusive, prosperous, and just Columbus for all of our residents. Together, there is no limit to all that Columbus and its people can achieve. I would now like to turn the podium over to a dear friend, a leader in our community who is helping to continue to move us forward and to make sure that there is justice throughout. Would you please welcome, or help me welcome, Judge Terry Jamison?
Thank you, Council President Hardin, and good afternoon to everyone. And I honor all the members of Columbus City Council and all esteemed officials for your service in the community. When Nancy called, I was more than willing to come. To be here for her, we've stood in the line together and served food boxes, and we've done things around the community. And I'm honored to be here to swear you in and give you the oath of office. And I thank all of you. All of you who worked so hard to help this, make this day possible for the three of them to be able to serve. It's our volunteers, it's our supporters. And we would not be where we are today without all of you. The French philosopher Jean Baptiste Rousseau said, "As soon as public service ceases to be the chief business of the citizens, and they would rather serve with their money than with their persons, the state is not far from its fall." But in our community, who are blessed with men and women who serve not only with their money, but with their time, their talent, their expertise to build our city, our county, our school systems, and our nation, may this oath that you take be the stepping stone towards your greatest achievements. Embrace the challenges ahead, for they will shape your character and your fortitude. Let your service be a testament to your unwavering commitment to excellence. Ignite the spark within you to chase your wildest dreams for a free and unfettered democracy for your constituents and the families to follow behind. Affirm your dedication to make a difference in this world. Believe in yourself and the various abilities that you bring to this position. Unwavering, immovable when the job seems overwhelming. Continue to believe in your own potential to bring change. Remember that your purpose is greater than any obstacle. Be prepared to be conciliatory, working together for the greater good of your community. As Maya Angelou said, "I've learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." As a council, your community must feel heard, recognized, and respected. Remember at all times why you ran for this office. Develop some top priorities that you will bring to every meeting, every citizen, every time. Never forget the import or the impact of your words, for as an elected official, your words are no longer your own. Your words represent the city of Columbus, the mayor, your colleagues, and the people of your community. Strive to speak with one mind, one voice, and with one purpose that others will seek to emulate the unity that you have and the service you give. And since it's Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Weekend, and I would not be standing here but for the work he did, I'll close with this quote. "If a man has not discovered something that he will die for, he isn't fit to live." Never be afraid to do what's right regardless to the personal price you pay. You are the forerunner for the next person that will fill your shoes. Live your life on purpose. Next, I'd like to welcome to the podium Crystal Lett.
Hello, everyone. My name is Crystal Lett, and it is truly, truly an honor to be here with you today and a great privilege to be able to offer remarks on behalf of my friend Nancy De Alcar. Nancy and I have known each other for about half a dozen years now, which seems very wild to me. Some of those times in the past six years, we have spent almost every day together, either knocking doors or working in our community. We met as fellow advocates, fighting for the rights and freedoms of our community members, especially our community members in need. From the first day that I met Nancy, it was clear that she was a powerful leader. She spoke with eloquence and grace, with passion and poise, and her dedication to service was evident immediately. But what separates Nancy De Alcar from so many others is her commitment to doing. From spearheading "Vill on the Hill" to organizing monthly fresh produce drives for seniors and families to serving on the Westland Area Commission and so, so much more, you can always find Nancy doing something to support others. She cares deeply about people in need, and she demonstrates her leadership not only by creating and implementing programs, but works tirelessly to bring up more leaders in the community to work alongside of her. She's been a champion for countless candidates that have gone on to become elected officials, showing them everything from how to run a campaign to how to create meaningful change once elected. And now, we get to celebrate her own election. I am truly, truly overjoyed to see someone who has given so much to so many to be in a position to even more deeply affect change. I have no doubt that Nancy will be a staunch advocate for her community members and will be a wonderful addition to Columbus City Council. So congratulations, Nancy, for being the amazing leader that you are, for being a fearless advocate for your community, and for always practicing what you preach. The city of Columbus is ready for your leadership, and I deeply congratulate you on this amazing achievement. I love you, my friend. Now, I'll turn it back over to Judge Jamison to administer the oath of office.
Thank you. If you would raise your white hands, I'm Nancy De Alcar.
I'm Nancy De Alcar.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
and the Charter of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
and that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
honestly.
Honestly.
and impartially.
And impartially.
discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
of member of city council.
Member of city council.
of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
Of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
during my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
and this I shall do.
And this I shall do.
as I answer to you.
As I answer to you.
Congratulations.
I intentionally invited April and Judge Jamison and Crystal Lett because I knew everything they said would be in perfect alignment with who I am. And so I get to give a shorter speech. Those of you who have followed city politics for a long time know that this has been a long time coming for me. What was it, seven years ago when Emmanuel Reamy, Rob Dorrance, and I were all coming in here looking for an appointment to city council? And so many people have helped me along the way. This has been a long time coming. And as my friend Meredith Lawson Rose reminded me, delayed is not denied. And the important thing is that even if you feel like you're delayed, still do the work. I have been a public servant, truly, all of my adult life. That is something that has never changed. The only difference is now I get to do more good for more people here on city council instead of just focusing in my parish on my side of town. I want to thank the people who have really been instrumental in getting me here. And I'm sorry in advance of anybody I forget to mention. To my husband Jeff, who has put up with a lot. Thank you. To my clergy friends who are gathered around here, particularly April and April, who have been a support for me through all of these years as I worked to serve my community. I want to thank Daniel Briggs for helping with my campaign. I want to thank Joe Rita for believing in me all those years and all the help that he did for me. I want to thank this great team on Columbus City Council that has been so wonderfully supportive, because running for office is a crazy thing. Most of all, I thank all of those community members who have been beside me all those years, those people who volunteered to stand out in the cold and the rain and hand out produce with me, all those people who have volunteered for all those projects that I have done to address human service needs on the west side. And I invite all of you out in the community and all of you here to find those opportunities where you too can serve. I have been one who has always been a doer, not just a talker. I get stuff done. We know that's not the exact quote that I use, but this is on TV. Everyone out there, it is a privilege to serve your community. Find your niche. Do what fits. What works with your assets. And go out there and make a difference. Because even all those small little things in a community, they all collectively come together to make a big difference. Find your niche. God has put us all in a position to serve in some way. We all have that great opportunity. Don't pass it up. The world needs you. Please, step up and serve. And I look forward to serving all of you. Thank you. Thank you. And I now invite Christopher White to come forward and speak about Chris.
Good evening, everyone. I had to write this stuff down because I would not remember later. So please forgive me. But I'm very excited about this day. I'm excited about being here because in my life, I never thought I would actually see the inside of this kind of location. So I'm excited. And I thank the Lord for the opportunity to introduce my son. I'm honored to be here today to talk about Christopher White. You know, our prayers for our children is to exceed their expectations, not only for themselves, but for others that depend on you. I was thinking over the 40 years or so that I've been, me and my wife, my lovely wife and esteemed, been married. We had our children at a very young age, and we decided when they went to college, we needed to be a blessing to somebody else. And so we went into foster care, and we raised so many children in the 20 years that we did foster care. I believe others in our community so well became and helped with us. It wasn't done by ourselves. Growing up in church, growing up in church, our love for the Lord has always allowed us to go and bless others, whether through a nursing home, whether we went to the prisons, even when we went to the hospitals, and even our own community. We try to be a blessing to draw others. As I think about that today, where my son desires to be, the voice, not just for himself, but for his neighborhood, his community, and for the city of Columbus, I get emotional and I'm extremely proud of the road that my son has chosen. As I am a Buckeye by birth from Akron, Ohio, but raised in Boston, we encourage our son to keep the love of the Lord with him along with the love of the city of Columbus. And great things not only will, but are going to happen. I'm proud of my son. There's so much I can say, but we don't have that much time. So at this time, I'm gonna say that and sit down. But I love him. I love my son dearly. Thank you.
Please raise your white hands. I, Christopher White.
I, Christopher White.
White, I'm tired of it. I'm tired of sitting. I, Christopher White.
I, Christopher White.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
and the Charter of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
honestly.
Honestly.
impartially.
Impartially.
discharge the duties of the office of member of city council.
Discharge the duties of the office of a member of city council.
of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
Of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
during my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
and this I shall do.
And this I shall do.
as I shall answer to you.
As I shall.
It's always a show when you have little people. So thank you for bearing with me on that one. It is truly an honor and a privilege to be able to serve the city of Columbus and create a better future for all the residents of this great city. And I couldn't have asked for a better birthday present, to be honest. But I would be mistaken if I didn't also mention that it's Capricorn season, and my fellow council member Shayla Favor is also celebrating, celebrating a birthday today. She couldn't be here, but I know she's watching. So if you indulge me on three, we'll say happy birthday, Shayla. Okay? One, two, three. Happy birthday, Shayla. Hopefully, that scores me some points. It's not about me, it's about her. If I learned anything on the campaign trail over the last two years, I can't start any speech without acknowledging two very important people. A higher power who guides my steps and my amazingly supportive wife. I mentioned this on Election Day, and it's been said through most of our speakers. Running for elected office is a sacrifice. Time away from family, my privacy, my peace. And the moment you raise your hand and commit to do it, you're stepping out on faith that your family is strong enough to handle your absence. So I thank, thank you, both of you, from the bottom of my heart. I love you. None of this is possible without you. To my father, who introduced me tonight, first, I want to thank you for being here and agreeing to speak. When I asked him to do this, the first thing he said was yes. The second thing he said was, "How long?" And I told him, "Take your time, but we're not going to be preaching from the podium tonight. We got other people speaking." You have allowed me to live out my dreams from day one, when times were good and bad. And as a parent, sometimes that goes without acknowledgement or appreciation. So I really just dragged you out here to say I love you. You have always been my hero, and all I have ever wanted to do in my life was to make you proud. proud. The same goes to my mother. She's the reason for all of this. Me standing here today, me having a beautiful wife, me living in Ohio. If you were to ask her today how I was as a child, she'd probably say, I was smart, talented, and special. She might also say, I was stubborn, hard-headed, and frustrated. She had to push me to apply to Ohio Wesleyan University. It was 20 years ago, so my memory is a little bit fuzzy, but I'm pretty sure she either wrote my college essay or heavily edited my essay for another school. And then when I got into both schools, she let me decide. Or she pulled one of those parent Jedi mind tricks that we all have where I think it's my decision, but it was really hers. Either way, it was the best decision we've ever made. And mom, for the record, I've got my own seven-year-old going on 17, who challenges me every single day. You really do reap what you sow, so I'm sorry. Thank you and I love you as well. Now, there are way too many people in this room who supported, encouraged, empowered me to thank you all individually. So if you're in the room as my guests or my colleagues, thank you for being here with us to witness this pivotal moment in the city's history. However, I would be mistaken if I didn't acknowledge three groups of people. First, my in-laws, who are an important part of my village. Thank you for everything that you have done. My staff on the official and campaign side, and of course, my council colleagues in the city hall staff, who have been so supportive throughout this entire process. I'm excited to see what we can accomplish together. As Columbus continues to grow faster than any other city in the state, it is imperative that we make smart decisions today to create the green city of the future. The Columbus region is expected to grow by 3 million people by 2050 and is already being called the Silicon Valley of the Midwest. As we continue to attract major tech organizations like Intel, Facebook, and Google, we must be strategic about how we will preserve our air in our drinking water for residents. And it is important that the residents of Columbus have an opportunity to work in these industries. I'm happy to report, we're already having discussions about preservation, sustainability, and thinking creatively about solutions. I hope to maintain this trend of being proactive, not reactive, in the sustainability space. I know trash and recycling is important to the residents of Columbus, evident by the fact that I was on the job eight hours before someone started bashing me online about the trash not being picked up on the west side. I'm working on it, Lisa. Give me some time. And I am thrilled to jump in and find creative solutions for litter and illegal dumping. I know many people aren't excited about trash. I'm a weird person who is, so. However, sustainability is more than just recycling. It's energy, it's water policy, it's workforce development, it's land use, and more. I can truly keep you all here all night talking about the possibilities, but I know there's still a few more people to speak. So I'll bring my remarks to a close. I want us to be at the forefront of environmental policy to make Columbus the greenest city in the country. The city has been taking incremental steps, but there's more we can and should be doing. I commend the departments and individuals that have been doing the work so far and I'm excited to join them in making Columbus a leader in green initiatives. Now's the time for the city, now's the time for City Hall to lead by example. Thank you again. I look forward to working with all of you. Now, I have the pleasure of introducing our next speaker, and while she needs no introduction, I was honored to do so, our president and CEO of the YWCA of Columbus, Liz Brown. People don't know this, but when I decided to run for office, she was the first person I met with. And not only was she extremely supportive then, she continued to be supportive throughout my campaign. Liz has served the Columbus community for many years in many roles, from serving on council to being CEO of Ohio Women's Public Policy Network. Liz has always been steadfast in uplifting women at all levels and as a girl dad, I admire that deeply. I look forward to now being able to continue to support her work in her new role. Please join me in welcoming Liz Brown.
That was so kind, Councilmember White. And to the council member's mother, I am very glad that there is such high hopes for stubborn and challenging sons. I'm not naming any names around here, but I might have one. I am really honored to be here today. It is my pleasure to get to say a little bit about Melissa Green. Melissa is a one-of-a-kind person. When she first sat down, asked me if she could have a conversation about running for office, she brought with her a 12-point plan about why this was the right move for her, what she could do in office, what she brought from her background. And so I want to say to folks at City Hall, that you are gonna get a little nerdier with Melissa around. She really comes across as very cool, but you get her talking about policy and it's evident. And the background that Melissa brings as a social worker could not be better matched with her penchant for policy wonkiness. She brings a deep sense of care for human lives and a deep commitment to social justice. As speakers before me have said, it is a sacrifice to run for office. It is. And how we do it matters. How we campaign matters for how we hold office. How did Councilmember Melissa Green campaign for office? Well, first of all, her committee is called Green for Good. One of her very first events, she asked folks to bring not just donations for her, contributions to her campaign, but donations of goods for people in need. She offered childcare to make the event accessible to families. And as the campaign continued across many months last year, what did she do? She pivoted to ensuring that her supporters were able to plug in to creating more, to creating a guaranteed right to reproductive health in Ohio's constitution. Running for office is inherently self-promotional. Obviously, Melissa had to talk about what she would bring, but what I want you to remember is the way that Melissa ran for office was to make sure that she was looking out for the community first. And that is special and it informs us on how she'll serve. I want to say to Melissa's family, to her husband, Mike, and his son, Miles, their son, Miles, huh? I want to say to Mike and Miles and to all the Greens and Minnixes who are here today, I want to say buckle up. And yes, buckle up because elected life is crazy, the schedule is crazy, the demands are crazy. You know, people think they are gonna kind of always have a right to Melissa, which they do. Honestly, when Melissa's at the grocery store, people have a right to talk to her about the work of the city. So buckle up for all that. But buckle up because you are about to have a front row seat to some incredible, earth-shaking, city-changing work. You get to have a front row seat to how a person truly builds a community for good right here in our city. To Melissa, having sat where you are, and I don't just mean here, I mean where you are right now at my first swearing-in, I'm not gonna offer advice because you don't need it, or you can text me for it. But I do just want to say, you know to follow your heart. Your heart is what brought you to being a social worker in the first place. Your heart is what took you from not just a social work practice, but to being in the community, fighting for the west side in every way that you knew how, as a health worker, as a city employee. Your heart is what took you from that to now serving at a higher level. So listen to your heart. And in terms of what you're walking into, I just want you to know, it will be all that you've hoped for and it will be nothing that you've expected. From the bottom of my heart, I am so proud to introduce to you, Councilmember Melissa And the judge to swear her in. And Judge Terry Jamison to introduce her. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Please draw my hand, please repeat after me. I, Melissa Green.
I, Melissa Green.
Solidly swear.
Solidly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
Thankfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge the duties.
And impartially discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Member of City Council.
Of the Office of Member of City Council.
Of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
Of the City of Columbus, Ohio.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
And this I shall do. And this I shall answer unto God.
As I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations.
Okay. If you wanted to take an over/under on how many times I'm gonna cry in the next five minutes, now would be the time to get out the ledgers. As Liz alluded to, I don't particularly enjoy standing on stage behind the microphone and I really also feel uncomfortable talking about myself. So I have definitely just made a very interesting career change, but I'm gonna try to do as little of that as possible because what I really want to talk about is all of you. And I also, before I get to that, have a million thank yous to make tonight and many, many more that I'm not gonna be able to make. But first and foremost, I think, already. First and foremost, to my partner, Mike, my partner in good and in life, thank you for the many sacrifices you've made along the way. The late nights at home with the toddler, the fact that you have had to buy some dress clothes, the vacations that we've had to postpone. You have literally been here every step of this journey, from the day that you showed up at my house unannounced, uninvited at 5:00 AM with a smoothie and a handpicked bouquet of flowers on the day that I went to take my social work licensure exam. And then you have been there every single day since, pushing me to do bigger things and be a better person. Thank you. Liz, I'm so thankful for you. I can't tell you how much an honor it is to have you give me away today at the altar and for your friendship outside of all of this. But the impact that you've had on this community is just, it's just unimaginable. And so it is such an honor to follow in your footsteps, or try to anyways, and we'll see how far that it takes us. To my parents and my brother Ross and sister-in-law Jill, but especially to my parents who are here today, who lived their entire lives in service to others. It's through their example that they helped instill in me the fundamental belief that our lives are about something bigger than us. And I think that's why I'm here today. And the other half of my family, the Minnix family, you know, there's just nothing I can say. Thank you for everything. My friends and my colleagues, who I now have the pleasure of serving with. It is such an honor not just to be in this space, but to be joining this dynamic team that I know beyond a shadow of a doubt is here for one reason and one reason only. And that is to do everything within our power to create a better, more equitable city and future for ourselves, for our children, for our children's children, and everyone that will follow after that. And it is such a privilege to be able to join you on the front line of that work. So thank you. My incredible team, my bosses, Haley and Tigist. The love and the patience and the empathy that you bring into this work, it is a completely beautiful and amazing thing to see and experience. The experience that you bring to our team, to our team at City Hall as well as to the city as a whole, is so, it's so critical and so needed. And I'm so grateful to you for agreeing to help co-pilot the 747 with me. And I've learned over the last two weeks, the only way it's staying in the air is because of you guys. So thank you very much. And thank you so many millions of times over to my friends, my chosen family, my girlfriends especially. None of this would have been possible without you. I try and fail every single year to always do more favors for others than I ask. And this year, especially with my friends, I fell very short and you were there to support me along the way still, even though most of you don't really care about politics at all and that's cool. You helped me collect signatures, you donated money, you dropped off professional business clothes to my house because it's social worker attire of mine, didn't necessarily fit the mold and I owe you more than I could ever repay. Everyone who's mentored me, I know David Who is here, all of my old bosses, supervisors, people that have inspired me along the way in big ways and little ways and ways that I didn't understand until standing right here today, people like Danielle Smith, the National Association of Social Workers Ohio chapter president, who allowed me to borrow her NASW Code of Ethics today, of which I was just sworn in on to, I think, to demonstrate that symbiotic relationship of the two roles and two duties that I'm now gonna fulfill. Thank you to all of you. And finally, to every single person in this room and those who were not able to be here today, there is a stone mural that many of you probably passed on your way here and I'm probably not the first in a swearing-in ceremony to reference this mural. But as you're walking into the building and heading into chambers, this mural reads, "The spirit of its people is the soul of a city." And I've always felt a deep connection since the first time that I saw that. And I believe in my core that it's true, that the spirit of our people in Columbus is the soul of our city and that the spirit of our people is good and just and hopeful and courageous and steadfast in our enduring commitment to this incredible community that we love so much. And while we certainly have challenges, or as I like to call them, opportunities, if you look around this room, I wish you could see what I could see, there is so much good all around us. There are so many good people and tireless advocates. See all of my west side friends, my Aunt Lisa Boggs back there and so many people, Ms. Jackie Miles, Chair of the Franklin and Area Commission, so many people giving of themselves selflessly and tirelessly every single day to help create a better community. So many incredible organizations that despite all the challenges and the hurdles, they get up, they go to work every day to help uplift and empower the people in our communities and the communities themselves and to make sure that no one in our city is left behind. And that work is not just hard work, it is heart work. And as we learn fairly quickly as social workers, that work is very imperfect. Sometimes we fall short and that's okay because we still have that spirit, that enduring spirit. And so when that happens, we get up. And so when that happens, we get up. We get up the next day, and we get right back to work, stronger, with a commitment to love more, to be more creative, to stare those hardships and those barriers right in the face and continue fighting for the future full of hope and prosperity that we know is possible, not just for ourselves, but for everyone that's going to follow us. You get asked this question a lot as a newcomer in this space: what made you want to run for City Council? And I've been asking myself that a lot here in the last couple of weeks. But I'll tell you honestly, you are my why. The spirit of our incredible friends, neighbors, and loved ones, the fearless advocates that inspire me every day through their selfless acts of service are what give me the courage to go out and to do more, to give more of myself, to fight harder, to keep pushing past whatever barriers might stand in our way, not only to preserve the good that we have around us today, but to fight for more of it tomorrow. So I guess I am the one standing at the podium today. But I want to be very clear that I am not standing here alone. I'm standing here with all of you, right here. And I hope that you will continue to allow me to stand beside you as a friend, as a peer, as an ally, as an advocate, so that we can continue to work tirelessly together to seize all the opportunity that lies ahead. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm going to try and cry only half the amount that Melissa just did. Well, I have the unavoidable job of closing tonight out. Just a couple of things I wanted to say to our newly sworn-in council members. One of the things that I think everyone here has mentioned is the sacrifice that families make to serve. And I just want to again give a round of applause to everyone's family who's here today and those who are not here, because you do not serve alone, you do not run alone. And the good thing is that family will stick with you, this council family will stick with you as you continue your service to Columbus. So if you will join me in again thanking the families that are here today. You know, the other thing that I love about these types of ceremonies, it sort of reminds me of that chapter of Huck Finn where the boys get to see their own funeral. And this is a good thing, right? You get to hear from these amazing folks in your lives that you wouldn't have the opportunity to really hear from in this kind of way about the service that you've given your community already and the service that's about to come. And you know, Liz Brown is a hell of a lot smarter than me, so she said she was not going to give any advice, but I'll give you a little bit. You will have some of the worst days in your career in this building. You will. You also have some of the best days of your career in this building. And that is because it is a rare thing to be presented with a problem, some small, some big, some very local to Columbus, some international. It is a rare, rare thing for any individual to have the responsibility that you now have to represent over 900,000 people in our community and try and solve their problems, some small, some big, some very local, some very not. And that ultimately is what has called you to this role. And even those rough days, you're going to have good ones. And those good days, there'll be more of, because as Columbus grows, as we change, as council changes, you will be called upon over and over and over again to bring the perspective that brought you here to make this community a better place. And when I think of the three folks that have joined council, you know, the council president and I, at the beginning of last year, we're thinking about, hey, we have got this big change in our system coming. We're going to have, you know, expanded council, new people coming. And with change, there's always anxiety about who will be there, what their gifts will be, what that will bring. And I'm incredibly, incredibly proud to have the three of you have raised your hand to say you wanted to serve this community in this way. And so incredibly proud to have you join this body and to commit to that service in Columbus. So with that, if everyone would like to close today out with giving our new council members, De'ak Hour, Green, and White, a round of applause and welcome to Columbus City Council.